Thank you. You're welcome. Good evening. Welcome to the January 9th Town of Barnstable Town Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could do a roll call, thank you.
Counselors, Beedenbender here. Bogan.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Rapgrassetti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Present.
Neary.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber. You have quorum.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. That's a negative, thank you. If we could all join in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have public comment, and I'm going to ask and remind you that we try to keep it to three minutes. So with the modern technology that we now have, if you get close to the three minutes, there's a zing that goes on in my head, and if you speak longer than that, there's another zing that goes on more in my head. I don't want to stop anyone who has good information as presenting, so if you take a little bit more than three minutes, that's acceptable, but if you can't keep it to the three minutes. Also, if speakers before you have said the exact same thing that you want to say, believe me, we heard you, if you could just kind of say, "I really agree with the..." You can come all up as you want and say, "I want to tell you that I agree with the last three speakers or the former speaker." It just gets cumbersome if we... So if we could keep it to a minimum, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. I noticed that some of you have already signed in, that's great, and you gave phone numbers if we wanted to contact you later to ask you some more questions. So thank you very much. If you want to come up now for public comment, we appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Carla Cabral, and I'm a member of Sustainable Practices, a nonprofit, grassroots, volunteer-based, environmental advocacy organization with representation across all 15 towns that comprise Barnstable County, what we refer to as Cape Cod. In 2019, we initiated the municipal plastic bottle ban as the first stage of a multi-year strategy focused on raising awareness of the environmental and human impact of single-use plastic bottle consumption. To state it plainly, we need to change our behavior when it comes to convenience. Plastics do not biodegrade and can last forever. Recycling is of little help and does not eliminate or reduce our dependence on plastic. The municipal plastic bottle ban eliminates town government purchase of single-use plastic bottled beverages and the sale of beverages in single-use plastic containers on town property. In 2019, we successfully had this ban adopted in all 11 towns where we filed. In the spring of 2020, we are seeking adoption in the remaining four. I come before... Sorry. I come before you today asking for your support with this effort and to request the municipal plastic bottle ban be placed on the agenda for discussion in a meeting within the next month. There are some handouts that we gave you, and I can email the bylaw language, and I thank you for your time, and we look forward to a more deliberate discussion. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Mahadev Venkatesan. I am the Executive Director for Sustainable Practices, the organization that Carla Cabral just introduced to you. I'm here just to give you a little bit of additional information, given that there's a three-minute limit, and I'm going to try to take one minute. Because I have a filer here from Sandwich that can actually talk to some of the questions you may have. So we are here trying to do this as a unified Cape action, because as you all are very much aware, borders on the Cape are not that deep. You can go from one town to another to violate a rule that's been put in place with an intention to actually protect the environment. So we really do look forward to another hearing where we have an opportunity to provide more details to you, and all of our filers are happy to come and speak. We move as a group, so thank you.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Mary Cody. I'm also a member of Sustainable Practices. I'm here tonight to support Carla Cabral and her effort to bring the municipal plastic bottle ban as an upcoming agenda item. I was the filer for the Town of Sandwich, and we approved this ban unanimously at our town meeting. As she has mentioned, the ban has passed in 11 Cape towns to date. Barnstable, being the largest Cape town, needs to step up and do the right thing, also by passing this ban. Imagine the press that would be generated if the entire Cape were to go plastic-free. We have been recognized locally as well as nationally in this movement. Please help to keep us moving forward by showing that Cape Cod cares for her people and the environment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Mesro, and I'm representing 58 residents who signed a letter that we sent to you, each of you, last month expressing concern about the water quality at Long Pond Marson's Mills. And some of those residents are here tonight, and if I could, I'd just like to ask them to stand for a moment. We know that the problem we have with water quality is shared, or will be shared, by all of you and your constituents. It affects our quality of life and it not address... It's going to affect tourism and our overall economy. Last summer, Long Pond was closed for more days due to cyanobacteria overgrowth than any other pond or lake in the town of Barnstable with one exception. So we formed a task force, and we've done a lot of research on the causes of this problem and possible solutions, and we're taking action. We know that we're a big part of the problem, so we're educating ourselves and our neighbors about changes we need to make in our homes and on our lawns to improve the situation. We've distributed 130 of the Healthy Ponds pamphlets that the town health department produced, and this spring, we're planning on distributing many more to the homes in the tributary area for our pond, which is to the northwest. We're also going to hold an educational event this summer about it. Much of the tributary for our pond is in Sandwich, so we're also going to talk to the Town of Sandwich and to two private golf courses in Sandwich. We've been working with the Department of Public Works, and we have a civil engineer in our group who is our contact with that person, and we're identifying catch basins around our pond that drain directly into the pond. Four so far, and we're working to find out if there are more. We've been working on landscaping solutions for the Long Pond Farm Beach parking lot, which we understand is a problem, and we're planning to collect additional water quality data by becoming pond testers with the Cape Cod Pond and Lake Stewardship Program. But there are three areas where we really need your help, and the first and foremost is, we know that we're at the tail end of the town's 30-year plan for wastewater treatment. We'd like to be first on the plan for addressing the MS-4 stormwater permit requirements, and specifically, we're really upset about the four-plus catch basins we have around our pond that have pipes that drain stormwater directly into our pond, and we'd like to see you address that. We also ask you to address the hard-worn channels in the Long Pond Conservation Area that take stormwater down the hill right into the water. And the last item is new treatments that we've identified that are out there that are lower cost and have low environmental impact on the ecosystem. They include ultrasound preventive algicide and barley straw, and we'd like your help in identifying the best treatment for our pond and helping us find funding to pay for that treatment. We're eager to work with you, and we want to help find grants that we know that are out there. We thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to having further discussions with you about this. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Heather Hunt, and I'm here on behalf of Barnstable Watch. I live at 424 Main Street in Austerville, but I'm speaking on behalf of a number of citizens from a variety of villages in connection with short-term rentals. Trying to figure out what to say in response to a report that I just heard for the first time from town staff recommending an approach and a timeframe for the short-term rental regulation development that I sat on my couch last night and heard Ryan Castle, the CEO of the Realtors, report to his membership on December 4th in a webinar. I don't actually know what to say about that, so I think I'm going to digest that and come back and talk to you another day, and I'll return to my prepared remarks. So Barnstable Watch is a group of residents concerned about investor-owned short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods, and when I say investor-owned, I mean homes that are used as homes by no one ever, and instead are used by investors as profit centers to host a steady stream of strangers' use of those properties for transient lodging. To be clear, Barnstable Watch has absolutely no objection to traditional Cape rentals where Cape families rent their own homes to other families from time to time. We have done a significant amount of research, and we've endeavored to pass that on to you in writing over time. Over the holiday, we took the time together to prepare some binders for you to collect the information that we've given both to the zoning subcommittee and to some community meetings, and we hope you find that helpful. Because we do this sort of at night on our sort of home computers, we had an error, and there was one document that failed to make it into some of your binders. That went to the notion of using nuisance laws to regulate short-term rentals, which we think is wholly inadequate. I'm going to send that to you so you can have our thoughts about the use of nuisance laws that go to an issue that we believe is fundamentally about zoning and land use. We think the land court here agrees that that's a fundamental zoning measure. I think it's important to understand our perspective about nuisance laws. In any event, I think it became more important to us that you understand our views when we learned in December that the Association of Realtors is reaching out to, I'll say, or Chicago and Boston for funding to commence a PR campaign here in Barnstable. In the very near term, they'll begin with a professional pollster with a focus on Barnstable to figure out, help them figure out, what they... This is their word, not mine, politically popular messaging that they might put forward to help convince you that short-term rental is not about zoning and land use, that it's just about nuisance, and that all you need to do is put in some nuisance or eggs and have a hotline for neighbors, and we should be content with a steady stream of neighbors using the homes next to us 365 days a year. After they figure out through a professional pollster what politically popular messaging might work, they'll begin a six-figure or so PR campaign and lobbying effort that'll begin in January. I understand it's America, and I think everyone has a right to advocate. Everybody has a right to go to any source of funding they wish to help that advocacy. So I don't have any objection to that on its face. I want to just remind you that we're residents, we don't have, you know, pollsters, we don't have large organizations from whom to get funding to do our advocacy. The error in the binder you got is because we do this on our home computers on the weekends. So it's really important to us... I'm going to echo the President at the last meeting who urged everyone to read what we've given you with great care, and if you disagree with something that we've put forward, such as investor-owned homes, investor-owned properties in residential neighborhoods that are home to no one ever, that are used 365 days a year as profit centers, if you think those belong in our residential neighborhoods, help us in this forum understand why, and help us understand the direction that you've given to your staff to craft regulations to come to you that reflect your thinking in that respect. So that's all I have tonight. I apologize if I went over my three minutes. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name's Emery Anderson. I'm resident of Marson's Mills, Precinct 10. I'm speaking tonight as President of the Indian Ponds Association, a group that's been around for over 60 years, looking after the welfare of the three Indian ponds. My main concern and message tonight is twofold. One is indirectly supporting the statement made earlier by Amy Mesro on Long Pond, we're not too far removed from there. I should say, on a positive note, the town, through this body, has demonstrated strong support for our issues in over the last 10 or more years, when we've had lakes that have needed treatment. I think we're fast approaching the point where Mystic Lake again is probably going to need some sort of assistance. And that raises the question about both the Commission's 208 Plan and the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan. Both of those tend to focus mainly on the estuaries, and that's where the high tax revenue is, is where most tourists who come look. But don't forget, we have close to 1,000 freshwater ponds on the Cape, and we need your help as well. We're well aware that specifically, the Indian ponds are not scheduled to be connected, or any of the properties close by are not scheduled to be connected to the new wastewater plan, but we hope that through other means, you can still look after the welfare of our lakes, and I'm sure in the near future, you'll be hearing, coming up through the pipeline, probably another request for something to be done to help out Mystic Lake. So thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is John Crowe. I'm the President of the Austerville Village Association. I just wanted to say, Heather Hunt was up here just one before this last person, and I share the same concern that I heard at the meeting tonight of the Ad Hoc Subcommittee on Short-Term Rentals, where a town planner seemed to be telling the members of the town council and also the civic association's members and the public that was there what they're going to do to write up the regulations ordinances dealing with short-term rentals instead of the other way around, where the public, who's put a lot of time and effort into this, brought ideas forward, and so has the town council's involved, and it seems that person is taking the lead versus the other groups, so it seems like it's backwards, okay? And I think that's important to keep in mind, that this is a very complicated issue, and there's obviously a lot of money, and there's a lot of people involved in this who have a distinct financial interest in it, many of them Realtors, which I have a lot of friends that are Realtors, and I have no problem with that. But I can tell you that going soft on this issue now, if we come up with regulations that say, "Okay, we're going to allow people to do that, we'll have the neighbors, the neighbors of those problem properties actually, the ones have to address those at 2:00 in the morning and call somebody instead of the actual owner of the home," okay? You're shifting the burden of responsibility for those properties to the neighbors instead of the person who owns the house. This is going to be a major issue, okay? I've heard scuttlebutt that, "Oh, there's only a few people complaining at this time," but looking at all the communities that we've listed in the... Barnstable Watch has listed that are major communities, and there are destination communities throughout the United States that have taken strict action against these properties, especially investor-owned, non-residents that own these properties, that this is just a time I'm waiting to happen, okay? And if we go down this road, where we take it easy and decide, "Okay, we're going to see how it goes," well, there'll be a lot of people making investment decisions on these properties. If I want to invest in rental properties, and I live in Massachusetts or South Carolina, and I want to do it here because it's a great location to do that, I'll be buying that house. And then two years from now, when you get hundreds of people arguing about this and telling and screaming about how bad their neighborhoods have become, those people can say, "Well, I made my investment decisions on what you passed, recently passed, what we're doing now." And I think you need to be very careful about where you go with this, because it's not just unique to us, but it's happened so many other places that people have taken, and towns and cities have taken extreme measures on this because it's ruining the neighborhoods. And I will reiterate, I have the memo from Ryan Castle to his Board of Directors dated December 12, 2019. He's the Cape Cod and Islands Association of Realtors CEO. They plan on spending $136,000, not including what they're asking the National Association of Realtors to spend on their behalf. And at a meeting that I was with lately with him, and I talked to him, he was complaining that the neighborhood groups were... He was disparaging us and saying that, you know, "We've got to be careful as Realtors about what they're going to do." And I said, "Well, I run a civic association, are you talking about me?" He says, "No, basically, we're talking about the national groups that have got involved in this throughout the country," say, "The Hoteliers Association have put money into these causes." We have not had any contact, nobody I know, whether my group, the Civic Association, or Heather's group, with any of those national organizations. But here, he's turning around and asking the National Association of Realtors to put a ton of money into this campaign in the next month. So you'll be hearing that from them. So keep an open mind, and what we do now is going to make a big difference in the near future, and you'll find out when we go. Thank you for your time.
Happy New Year, everybody. My name's Chuck Toddle, longtime Centerville resident, and I want to thank you all. Mark Gels, I don't know if you can hear us, but thank you for the Christmas lights at 310 Main Street in Centerville. They certainly were a welcome addition to our village scene in our beloved Centerville. You'll remember that the town purchased that property on Wednesday, December 4th, by eminent domain for over $550,000. The town council voted to purchase the freestanding, single-family home with 0.32 acre of land as a Plan B for a potential future site for a wastewater pump. A week ago, on January 1st, a property almost directly across the street became available for purchase for $360,000. Sixbrier Cliff Lane, and it's 0.35 acre of land, is diagonally across the street from 310 Main Street at about the same elevation, and could be had by the town for $200,000 less than it paid for the 310 Main Street Plan B site. I bring this to your attention because it's a clear example of why the purchase of a single-family home, or any other private land for that matter, for municipal purposes like wastewater pump sites must be carefully considered. I want to thank you for your commitment to pursue and secure Article 97 permission... Councilor McLaughlin's here, I'm sure he's working hard on that. Secure Article 97 permission at the state level to use a tiny piece of Mother's Park for the wastewater pump in Centerville. Again, I'm sure it's on the top of the list of the town attorneys. We are told that it will take nine to 12 months to secure Article 97 permission, after which the freestanding, single-family home at 310 Main Street in Centerville will go back on the market for private purchase, so we can get it back on the tax rolls so that hard-working taxpayers can continue to afford to live in this wonderful town. I'm here just simply thanking you for your commitment to do this and reminding you that we're, as attentive as you are about this, and earlier today, had some email communication with Britt, which was most welcome, and I know that it's on the top of a few people's list to pay attention to, and thank you for your time and attention.
Good evening, my name is Janet Davis, and I live in Centerville, and I'm a member of Centerville Concerned Citizens. Like many of you, I'm a parent and grandparent, and like you, our first concerns are and always will be for our families. When I first learned of 5G, I thought, "It can't be as bad as I'm hearing. Surely someone has our back, and we won't be exposed to an untested, potentially dangerous technology." I was horribly mistaken. Thankfully, many are sounding the bell. Throughout the country and around the globe, scientists and health experts continue to warn leaders and the public of the dangers 5G will unleash if it is deployed in the manner the telecom industry and the FCC is dictating. In the wise words of former FCC Commissioner Mian Klybrun, "Being first does not mean you're being best when it comes to serving communities, and that is my biggest fear with the fixation on being the first out of the gate with 5G." Barnstable is inching closer to becoming another community saddled with untested 5G on their residential and commercial roadways. On a recent walk, I noticed white spray paint around the base of telephone poles in the village of Centerville. We learned today that a utility company is testing the poles for structural integrity, most likely a necessary step to ready for 5G. But we have options. Cities and towns are finding ways to slow the process or deny 5G outright. This is why it is so critically important, we hear C.C. Dusset's presentation on 5G. She works tirelessly with fellow wireless safety experts, scientists and health experts from around the globe. Barnstable needs to know 5G is looming. We, as a community, must take advantage of Mr. Dusset's expertise as we navigate the difficult maze 5G presents to municipalities. I could quote hundreds of scientists from countless peer-reviewed studies, but instead, I'll leave you with the haunting words of former senior telecom engineer Robert C. Kane. Never in history has there been such a practice as we now encounter with the marketing and distribution of products hostile to the human biological system by an industry with foreknowledge of those effects. The science is clear, the risk is real. We must do all we can to protect the residents of Barnstable. Let's take advantage of Mr. Dusset's close proximity to the Cape and invite her to an upcoming town council meeting. We have provided a packet for you that we hope you will find helpful as you look deeper at 5G and what it means for our town. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name's Devon Curran. I'm actually a current resident of Brewster, but I'm from Centerville, and I plan to raise my two children here in Barnstable. They're already enrolled in preschool here. We spend a lot of time here as it is. So the reason I'm here tonight is really on their behalf and the behalf of all the other children in this town. I want to reiterate everything that Janet said, and just request that you consider adding C.C. Dusset to an upcoming agenda. This rollout of 5G technology, which I understand is set to begin here in Barnstable sometime this summer, is something I'm just beginning to learn about, but the more I do learn, the stronger I feel that it's imperative for us all to learn about it and to gain a better understanding of the risks that are associated with it. My main concern is for our children, because they'll be the most affected by the radiation that's involved. So I'm certainly not qualified to speak in depth on the facts at this point, but C.C. is an expert with a lot of valuable information to offer. I think this is an issue that the general public has been grossly under-informed on, and we owe it to our children and ourselves to hear what she has to say about it before we let it happen. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susanna Nickerson from Chatham. We are at a time in history when we must choose to radically reduce plastic consumption. Single-use... Single-use plastic pollution is everywhere, from the air we breathe to the food and beverages it contains, and the land and oceans where it directly contributes to the death of fish, birds, and other wildlife. A municipal plastic bottle ban is a step in the right direction. It is not a radical step, it is a practical step. We all know that we must take action, and a single-use plastic water bottle ban is an easy step to reduce a substantial amount of plastic with a minimal inconvenience. Those of us who lived before the plastic water bottle came into existence know how easy it is to get water without a plastic bottle when we want it and need it. I hope you will join with the other 11 towns on the Cape and adopt the municipal plastic bottle ban in Barnstable. The Cape has an opportunity here to be a leader on the environmental issue. If we work as one community, we can be the example for the nation and lead them. Thank you.
Didn't sign up because I wasn't going to speak, so can I speak in advance?
Absolutely, yes.
Could you pass me that? But please sign in and say your name.
My name is Linda Edson. I'm from Marsden Mills, and I live on Long Pond. I belong to the group that Amy has put together for the preservation of the pond. And it came to my discovery early on that the town, in taking the road, that was developed, subdivision was developed in the '60s and '70s, and the town came along to take Lake Shore Drive in the '80s. And in doing so, they did a betterment for 31 property owners. And this is a map that came, that wasn't done by the developer, it was done by the town, that shows three of the four drains that the town of Barnstable put off of Lake Shore Drive through a 14- to 18-inch galvanized pipe buried in the ground that goes directly into the pond. I just want you to have that going forward so you can see what we're dealing with. DASSI is working very hardly, hard with the DPW to try to come up with some resolve to stop this. Thank you for your time.
Again, even if you did not sign up, you feel free to come up, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Bridges. I live in Harwich. I'm part of Sustainable Practices, and we are trying to ban single-use plastic water bottles on the whole Cape. Many of us lived before, remember, not having plastic, and now we are drowning in it. Our town of Harwich and other towns are having to pay double and triple the price to get rid of our plastics now. It's up to $100, $200 a ton to get rid of them. We don't need the plastics, they are not, right, not, they're made from non-renewable fuels, they leach into our consumables, and they never biodegrade. And I hope you will join the other towns in banning these single-use plastic water bottles. Thank you.
You probably don't remember me, but in any event, I've heard a few things this evening, and they're fascinating. Plastic water bottles. Joe Butera, Bassett Lane to Winter Street, and the last 55 years in Centerville on Main Street. I've been here since 1944. Plastic bottles, I have a quick comment on that. Charge $0.10 a bottle, you'll get them back. I don't know what you do with them, you get them back, it'll save you a lot of money. A little bottle of water for $0.10, you're going to think about buying one twice. Anyway, I'll go there. Because the whole issue of the sewer system now seems to be water. Now, originally, I thought the sewer system was about saving the lakes and the ponds, and I've heard about Long Pond, and there are 365 lakes on the Cape that I've heard of since I was a kid. And now they're all polluted. Now, I went to Fair Acres Day Camp and swam there, and it was wonderful. And I went to Hathaway's when I was a kid and swam there on my bicycle. Then they put a bunch of chemicals in there to try to do something, and it all turned white. We saw cars down there, didn't see any bodies, but we saw a lot of stuff. So I shoot from the hip because I don't come up here with a planned agenda, but I'm going to go to Main Street in Centerville. Now, Britt, I happened to notice the other day when I was driving by that a truck was there, and with a big, big cement drain thing that was going to go in the road that nobody cares about and was going to be closed. And so I had to pull over and say, "What in the world is going on at Mother's Park here? Oh, we have been instructed that we need to get this done immediately by the town council." And the woman just came by in a white car and said, "I hope you're doing this now and you're going to finish it." I don't know who it was. They put this thing down, and with five, I watched them go down, I watched them dig the thing out. Now, we were talking about, "Oh, you can't put anything in the road, it's too high. It's five feet too high." Well, my God, they dug this whole thing up in about 20 minutes, and they had this thing in the ground that afternoon. Five guys worked on it, five feet. We can't use the road for a pump station, but they went down five feet, and we can't use it because it's five feet too high, maybe. We have to use Mother's Park. I don't care whether you use Mother's Park or the road. The road belongs to you, we don't have to go to a Section 90-whatever-you-call-it. My next question is, Britt, you told us and you promised us you were going to work on this, is it 97?
I'm sorry, Joe, but please address your questions to the chair, to me, to none of the councilors. Thank you.
Oh, I know, I can't address a question and no one can answer a question. But therefore, I would address you, sir.
Okay.
That Ms., Counselor Britt Brigandmeier, Brett Breden here, said that she would specifically follow this up and make sure that we went to 95 and got this thing going with the state to get this thing put to Mother's Park. I would like, I can't ask a question, I would like a report on this after the public comment. What has been done? I'm not going to ask the town council, he's under the auspices of whatever she tells him to, or you guys tell him to do. So I would like a report on that following the public comment. So that was my second question. I had one other one, but I probably talked too much and forgot what it was because I'm getting old. But in any event, thank you for the comment. I agree with Chuck said, and, you know, we shoot from the hip so quickly around here, and I was told, "It's going to be 10 years before we do this, but let's go buy this $550,000 piece of property tomorrow morning." And I noticed that we were going to have a council meeting, and people could come up here and talk and maybe have another vote on this. But, boy, two days before, you guys bought the prop, excuse me, you guys didn't buy, you ordered the town attorney to buy the property. Now, we have something similar for $200,000 less. Now, is that really good planning? 10 years out and we have to do that? Come on. Let's go, I mentioned something two months ago about physical responsibility, and we got that town of Barnstable with the bricks up in the air and everything else. Come on, let's start thinking about where the money's going and spend it practically and think about what we're going to do here. Dot connect, start dot connecting. Just don't shoot from the hip and go for it. Please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanted to address the 5G issue that seems to be coming to our neighborhoods, and my concern is also for our children. And we're dealing with something that we have not studied. There are some places in the world that have outlawed this technology. It's radiation that we don't know what is going, what it's going to do to us. We wanted to invite town officials to two upcoming events that are addressing the many concerns surrounding wireless technology and 5G specifically. On January 12, and I'll give you guys this paper, the Willard School of Concord Mass will hold a forum sponsored by Concord Safe Technology entitled Wireless Technology in Our Midst. And the invite is for all of us here and officials, because I don't think most of us know much about this technology. It's got these cute little names. When I went into T-Mobile to get my mom's new phone, which we've talked about quite a bit here, they just wanted to sell me a 5G phone, which wouldn't work on the old technology, which was really interesting. I went in to upgrade my phone in Verizon, same thing. They want to create 5G technology that only works with 5G, so all the rest of our phones will be obsolete. So another event is on January 15, and all of these have Blue Star speakers from the medical fields, science and engineering fields. These are not the locals like myself who really don't understand the engineering of this. So I invite you to come to these events. January 15, State Representative David Michael is hosting What You Should Know About 5G in Downtown Stanford. C.C. Dusette's name is one of the listed speakers at the Concord Mass Forum, and we are so fortunate to have her be willing to come here and educate us. I would really request that you invite her here for our own knowledge for the neighbors. Thanks.
Who can I give this to? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nobody? Okay. Thank you very much. If no one else is going to speak, we're going to close public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Counselors, response to public comment, please. We're going to start with Counselor Britt Breden, please. Breden, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm going to say this one time. It's phonetic, it's E's and D's and B's, it's Bed and Bender, it's very simple. All right, I have a few comments to make, just go down the list. First of all, I want to thank the Sustainable Practices Group for coming forward and bringing your friends from other towns as well. This is an issue that I care deeply about. I used to work in the animal welfare and conservation field, marine mammals particularly dear to my heart, and the impact of plastics, not only on our environment but major ecosystems, is tremendous, and it's tragic. And we have to start changing our behaviors, and something like a municipal ban is not such a big stretch. So I applaud you and your efforts. I will certainly support anything like this going forward, and I am happy to work with you to see what we can do in this town, work with our town manager, see what we might be able to do. I think this is an incredibly important issue, and it links to all of the other things that we do. Incidentally, bottled water is not good for you. It has been shown, research has shown, that there are plastic particles in your plastic bottled water, so it's not a healthy alternative either. I want to address Chuck Tuttle. I want to thank you for your recognition of the hard work that our town staff is currently undertaking on this issue regarding Mother's Park and the pump station. Mr. Butero, if you're still out there.
Butero?
A note regarding what you saw happening on the road behind Mother's Park. There is a severe drainage issue there that was dangerous to traffic, dangerous to the homeowner that lives right off of that street, and in response, you're, Mr. Butero, your rudeness is really appalling.
I agree.
And you know what? I have nothing more to say to you. So moving on to 5G, thank you very much to the Centerville Concerned Citizens, and this is a tricky issue because this is a federal issue, right? This is FCC, and we've talked about this a number of times, but I would wholeheartedly support C.C. Dusette coming because whether or not this town can actually do anything about it, which I know that there are towns that are doing certain things, so I'd love to hear her perspective on that, but I do think it is incredibly important, if this technology is coming to our town, that we be educated and understand it. So I would wholly welcome her being on an agenda item and offering a presentation of sorts to this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cullum.
Yes, thank you. I have a few comments as well on the water bottle ban. I was lucky enough to spend Christmas in Mexico, my husband's from Cozumel, and we had a wonderful time, this trip, and one thing I noticed was that plastic straws, plastic bottles have all been banned on the island. And they are typically a receptacle for all sorts of bad behavior from cruise ships because there's so many tidal currents that go in so many different ways, and the beaches that should be absolutely pristine are littered with trash and normally. And the tourists always blame the locals and say, "Oh, they just must be lazy for not picking," but every day, so much trash washes up from cruise ships that just dump it overboard. So I think that if a little island like Cozumel could ban something like that, I think it's important that we have a global vision about saving our planet, and I would support that definitely. I was particularly impressed that the straws that they handed out were all made from hemp and all made in Mexico, so it was pretty cool. Also, with regard to the zoning committee, you know, I have to say, my master's degree is not in planning or zoning, my master's degree is in Latin and Ancient Greek. So I'm not going to be writing your zoning, that's not my job. This job actually, as all of us know, is really a part-time job. We all have full-time careers. So we have staff, reliable staff, that we expect to bring forward through critical examination, comparative documents that we can come up with, and hone what's right for our community. So I think putting Elizabeth Jenkins in that light is unfair. It's her job, she's the director of planning, she's not the one passing the legislation, that is our responsibility, but it is her job to draft it, and we rely on her and her expertise to do that. And she is under the auspices of our town manager, that we all have faith in, and we gave him a great review. So I really feel that you can hold us responsible for the final, for the final product, definitely, but to fire off at her is a little unfair. She's just back from maternity leave, as we all know. We've been waiting patiently for her return because, I can speak for myself, I believe in her capability of pulling it forward. I didn't feel comfortable moving anything forward without her, and that with the changes with our legal department, too. I think now we are perfectly poised to be able to get the hand-in-glove treatment that we need on this and to make sure that we're crafting something that's good for Barnstable. So we appreciate your voice, definitely, and your patience, and we're doing the best we can with it, and I just think that we need to have, you know, kind of more of a circumspect view when it comes to what people's particular roles are in moving it forward. And also with the 5G thing, I would love to hear more about it. I think it would be a great workshop for this, for this group to hear, because it's all Greek to me, as we say. Thank you.
Counselor Snapp.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to all who came. Our first meeting of the year, and we have a lot of citizen participation, and that's a great thing for any town to have, especially on a winter night. So thank you all for coming out. In order of the issues that were addressed, and there was definitely an environmental theme tonight, again, I appreciate Sustainable Practice coming before us. We may be late to the party, but I think we're at a point now where we can seriously consider how we move forward with trying to eliminate plastic bottles. And I mean, so a water ban might be the best place to start. Your persistence and your strategies are welcome, so we will obviously be, some of us will be considering it and a way to move forward. For those of you who are concerned about our lakes and ponds, and I appreciate the concern, especially on Long Pond and Marsden's Mills, it is a pond I have enjoyed for many years, and it was an incredible disappointment to not be able to use it at all for the entire summer this, in 2019. And we know it's a complicated issue, that sewer-ing isn't going to be the be-all, end-all for any of our ponds and lakes, but it obviously is something that, you know, nutrients are a contributing factor, and I like the approach. We, as a community... We, as a community, are obligated under MS-4, which has to do with stormwater, to be addressing that, and so I think it seems very appropriate that some focus in other parts of the town that aren't going to get soured is, I would agree with that priority, and I will urge my fellow counselors to try to make that happen. And to the extent that I can help support you have some actions that the town, you know, easy steps that the town might be able to do to support eliminating some of the contributing factors, we will, you know, continue to move forward on that. It seems like we're starting to get a critical mass of dealing with our lakes and ponds. A lot of the 208 plan did not directly address our lakes and ponds. Most of you are aware of the report that just came out from the Association of Preservation of Cape Cod on the status of our lakes and ponds, and so I think we're, again, at a tipping point where we need to make sure our town has the resources available to make sure we're evaluating, assessing, and doing what we can sooner than later to make sure those ponds stay viable. In terms of, I would like to just echo the comments of Counselor Cullum, the zoning and regulation process that we have in place, we have spent a good amount of time getting citizen input. We will continue to get citizen input. There's no attempt at shutting the door or eliminating certain viewpoints, and I ask for trust in the process. There will be plenty of time to comment on any draft regulations that are presented to the council, and again, I think we have very competent staff to carry that forward. I am interested in the 5G issue, but I think that I would appreciate a balanced approach, and so any workshop that we might have, we may want to have a variety of viewpoints so that, just so that all the facts can be considered as we go forward with that, because I think it is a critical issue for us to be looking at as that infrastructure gets developed. Instead of being reactive, we should be proactive, so I would agree with having some workshop in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Shaughnessy, did you want to speak?
Please, thank you, President Hebert. This is to Amy Mesro and Emery Anderson and everyone from Marston's Mills who came out to talk about Mystic Lake and Long Pond. Last night I attended a Weldon Library program presented by Andrew Gottlieb from the Association of Preserve Cape Cod. In light of your email, Ms. Mesro, which I read, and I also read the paperwork from Blue Green Technologies regarding Lake Guard, I specifically asked him about it with you in mind, and what he told me is, copper's one way, another way they treat is with alum. He actually said alum is the preferred, and I asked him why. Apparently, the rationale for that is with the copper-based algicide, and I can imagine with any algicide this would happen. It all basically settles to the bottom of the pond as gunk and thereby suffocates sort of that pond-bottom ecosystem, and said that really it's a short-term fix, and sort of reiterated in order that really the biggest issue with our water, and someone mentioned how we focus more on embayments than we do on our lakes and ponds, and he sort of reiterated that as well last night. So I'm really happy to hear that some of you are volunteering to be testers, but basically said the more we can educate the public about little things that you guys can do, and you mentioned that you're already, the houses immediately around Long Pond are taking that action, and I think that's really excellent that you all are doing that. But in addition to that, the biggest issue on the Cape is our septic systems, and I want to throw out there to everyone that, in front of the whole group, and there was about 25 or 30 people there, he gave kudos to the town of Barnstable, because in terms of the entirety of Cape Cod, we're furthest along, we're one of two towns that actually are thinking of sewer-ing, but we're further along in terms of having a comprehensive plan. Our septic systems are the number-one thing hurting our water, and even though rain gardens and getting rid of lawns and all, stop using Roundup and chemical fertilizers, all these little things help, the biggest thing is our septic. So I want you to know that I'm taking you seriously, asking about it, and thanks very much for being here.
Thank you. Counselor Leveque.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to start off with Amy as well, and thank you for coming, and thank you everybody from Long Pond area. I'm the counselor from the other side of the pond, so to speak, and Mystic Lake, and I just wanted to, I wanted to wait till Counselor Snep spoke and addressed. I didn't want to overspeak or kind of stay in my lane a little bit, because it's not technically my neighborhood, but I will say that I really appreciate the emphasis that you put on, and as we go through this whole wastewater management plan and all these different 208 plans, the biggest thing, I think, is what can the town do for us? What can the town do for us? We need sewerage, we need things of that nature, and the thing that you emphasize the most, which I really appreciate, is the education part of it, and because that really is, if we could put pipes in the ground right now, we still have wastewater in the ground 10, 15, 20 years. That hasn't even hit the water supply yet, hasn't hit the pond yet, so to speak. I mean, yes, stormwater drains, things of that nature, and what's going to help the mills the most is, yes, sewerage, great, we need to get those pipes in the ground, but just the cost, and we know where the tail end, it's because we're the furthest away, and, I mean, West Barnstable, they're not even going to get anything at all, because again, same reasons, and also because of zoning issues and things of that nature, but the idea that the things that are out there is the alternative plans, and I think you did touch upon that as well, and I think that's what you were talking about, and I think that's what all of you are here for, is those are the things that we really need to research. Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, the work that they're doing over there, Z. Crocker, I think we need to really pay attention there, if you want to talk to him about that. They're doing a lot of great things over there, and some things that, low-hanging fruit type of things that you spoke of, you touched upon, and I think that those are the things that definitely, I'm talking with our town manager, Markell's very supportive of that, DPW, Dan Santos, those are the things that we're constantly looking towards, and yes, and I know, yes, the estuaries are first and foremost talked about the most, but I'll tell you something, the first thing I ever read in the record was the dredging of Mill Pond, and that's not an estuary, and that has to do with the health of Marston's Mills' River, and I think that, again, supporting those things, working with DP, I'm sorry, the DEP, and trying to get those things pushed forward, so please, you know, stay tuned. I think that there's lots of things happening, and again, I really appreciate your willingness for the education part of it, and I emphasize that with the people from Wacoaqua Lake that I got to speak with as well, that, you know, they need, there's things that we can do, like you said, the grasses, the different things that can go right on the line and inside the actual pond. Moving on from that, again, thank you again for the importance of that, I just also wanted to, you know, speak to John and Heather, and just know that, yes, we understand that there's influences from the National Association of Realtors, actually, which I used to be a member of, and Cape Cod Association of Realtors, and, you know, they have a certain, again, it's America, like you had said, but understand that we may listen to them, but really, what we're concerned about, and I can rest assure you, I know myself, and I think for a lot of these counselors, is that, all the counselors, that we care most about our citizens, we care most about what is going to affect our neighborhoods directly, and yes, we want to see both sides of the issue, but at the same time, we want to do what's best for our community. So, and I understand you're being concerned about that, but I know, you know, again, I can really only speak for myself, but I can say to you that my passion is to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe, that our neighborhoods are listened to, and that they're represented first and foremost. So I already spoke enough about, and the council's touched on the other issues, but I appreciate everybody coming here today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counselor Bogan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll speak briefly on two issues, both of which I have to qualify or make a disclosure. First of all, with regard to 5G, I should indicate that I do represent the wireless industry, and have testified before municipal bodies just like this one on this precise issue. And I'm not going to get into the substance, only to say that, as Britt kind of alluded, it is principally a technology and a service that is regulated at the federal level. So states and municipalities are very constrained as to what they can do, and I'll simply leave it at that. With regard to the short-term rental issue, again, in the spirit of full disclosure, I am married to Heather Hunt, I happen to live next to an investor-owned, short-term rental, but I can assure you that my views are not necessarily influenced by either of those circumstances. I can assure you, I've been with my wife for 20 years. We are two strong-willed people. We don't always agree, and in fact, many of, very often, we don't agree. That having been said, I didn't take Mr. Crowe's comments, and I do sit on Mr. Crowe's board, on the Osterville Village Association, as a criticism of the town planner. What he said was, I have a concern with the town planner telling the short-term rental subcommittee and the council what should be done, as opposed to the other way around. So I understood his comments to be a concern with regard to process, and the question, I believe, he asked during the subcommittee meeting, or at least tried to ask, was where was the planning director getting her information? Because I, for one, know that the town had retained a consultant. I haven't seen that consultant in eight or nine months. Query what happened. Consequently, it's natural to say, where are you getting the information that is influencing the direction that you are going? As a lawyer, I am concerned, because zoning is a community's decision as to what it wants to look like. Where do we want our residences to be? Where do we want our commercial businesses to be? Short-term rentals have undermined, or potentially undermined, those objectives, and I think we have to move cautiously when we deal with those. This is not rocket science. We are not the first to deal with it, as much as we like to think we are unique. There are communities very much like the Cape, Santa Monica, California, the Hamptons in New York, that have dealt with this issue. And so as we go forward, I ask that we look at those communities as a way of influencing what we do. Finally, I will tell you that it was raised at an Osterville Village Association meeting last month, and I was quite surprised at the unanimity with regard to the opposition to general short-term rentals by members of that board. And I'll yield the mic.
Thank you. Any other counselors who'd like to speak to public comment? All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Starr, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to just, it's great to have everyone come. I think it's great for us to all be educated at the same time, and for people at home to see what people's issues are. You spend a lot of energy learning about your particular issues. You've got some courage to come up here and spend, it's only 8:00, I'm surprised. Sometimes it's very late, but I'm glad you came out tonight and shared it with all of us. The bottle bill is something that the Infrastructure and Energy Committee's been working on, and maybe they could be instructed to bring something forward, to work with DPW or the town manager. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other counselors wanting to speak, we're going to end public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Public response to come. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very, very much. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to wait one minute until everybody leaves here. Thank you for coming. You're always welcome to stay. If you could exit and have your conversation outside, that'd be great. Maybe a two-minute recess. Any counselors that need a two-minute recess, please take it right now. Do you need a break? Do you need a break up here?
Just call back up when you're ready.
Okay, thank you very much.[1467.33] Okay, we're ready to go again. Thank you for your patience. Thank you. Counselors, so, thank, thank you very much. But in the future, what we'll do is, unless I announce a real recess, instead of mumbling it, we'll, we'll kind of wait until we decide as a group that we're taking a five-minute recess or something, okay? It was kind of difficult because of the way the, the population was going, and they weren't moving, so I thought we'd take advantage of that time and reorganize. But in the future, I'll try to make that a little bit more orderly for everybody. Thank you very much. So now we've reached the Town Manager's Communications. Mark, thank you very much.
Well, good evening, and Happy New Year to everyone. Before I begin my Town Manager's Report for the period of December 20th through January 9th, there were, there was much public comment this evening. That was exciting to have our public here. And I'll, I'll start by sharing with you that certainly since the wastewater planning that we've been doing, and we've been talking about for decades, and, and most recently proceeding with, and Director Santos will give you all his second meeting of the month update at your next meeting, we, we have been proceeding with everything that we've said we would be proceeding with, whether it be submittal of various aspects of the Comprehensive Water Management Plan, or specific projects. So I meet regularly with Vineyard Wind. Councilor Beedenbender and I meet regularly every month, but weekly, and even more often than that, sometimes daily. She and I are discussing the Mother's Park disposition, the review of the will, which is something that our legal department is doing right now, and will be reporting back after they review the will and how that property came to us. We're looking at the road and the road layout, and the opportunity perhaps that if Mother's Park doesn't work for us, that the road layout might be an opportunity, given that the village of Centerville has come to us for many years and asked to look to close or to limit use of that road. So we're looking at that alternative and aspect, as well as use of 310 Main Street and other properties in the area. But I can assure you that Councilor Beedenbender has been diligent in making sure that I and my staff stay on top of this issue and provide timely answers. So, and I don't expect that that will change. So we will continue to be responsive on this issue. And we are, as, as recent as today, I've, I've discussed this with the town attorney, and I've discussed it with the Director of Public Works. Bans on plastic, absolutely something on the radar for us to be looking at. Would be more than happy to work with you all and our community. I can tell you that our, our youth are very active in, in moving to not using plastics, to having refillable containers and the opportunity to do that within our schools. That does already exist. Director Santos has undertaken a review of our facilities, specifically our bathhouses, our ways to water, our public buildings. And I would expect that, you know, over time, you will see us transition to making available spigots that are potable water, so that people can refill bottles. Probably, most likely, we'll try to, you know, hit some of the more heavily utilized summer recreational facilities, because we have a lot of people drinking a lot of water at, at that point. But beyond that, we'll work with you on all aspects of certainly recycling, reusing. I, I think reuse, Director Santos and I just had a conversation about utilizing some of the grant funds he received for an educational program, because the solid waste market is a very difficult one right now, and we're seeing, I think there was even an article in the newspaper in the past, today, or in, in recent, recent past, relevant to other communities on the Cape, and the types of cost increases they're seeing to dispose of materials. We're no different. Those are the same vendors that service us. So we need to really educate. We need to make sure that when we recycle, we are doing it in a cost-effective and certainly environmentally sensitive manner, and that in the end, we have a long-term plan that'll work for our community. It's all about balance, and it's all about maintaining that quality of life here that we have in Barnstable. So I can assure you, we're active on all those issues. For long pond and Indian ponds, I think you all remember the restructuring that we did a couple of years ago. One of the primary reasons that we took our Natural Resources Department and made it a department and not a division was that we recognize that we need to have that sort of involvement at the departmental level. It can't be subordinate to other primary functions of a director. It needs to report to the town manager. It needs to play an active role in managing our natural resources. Certainly, our estuaries are natural resources. Our lakes and ponds and rivers and streams are natural resources. One of the things that you will see us doing, we have already done it, is we are moving forward with a more active look at how we can elevate our ponds, our lakes, our streams, our rivers, as, as far as knowing holistically how our community manages those assets, and, and are they as healthy as we can make them? Ideally, we'd do that naturally, but I think you hit right on the, the head of the nail when you say that we've created systems that aren't natural systems, like septic systems, and they present challenges to us. So we're looking at, you know, pumps and pipes as well, but we're really going to put an emphasis over the next year on better understanding these natural systems, making sure they function as well as we can help them function, being good stewards of them, and really elevating it. So that, a lot of this has been driven, when I say this, a lot of the regulatory focus has driven us toward developing plans to satisfy that, those regulatory requirements. The focus still isn't on, as, as much on our freshwater bodies, but we all know that the headwaters in the Indian ponds or, or, or other water bodies within our community feed the rivers that enter the bays that ultimately, you know, and, and end up in our sound. They also interact directly with our drinking water. So we've already started to move on this, and I think better communication with our public, so that they know we've done this, and that we are active on it. When we get into the specifics of drainage structures, there's a separate effort ongoing, and has been now for, it feels like the better part of a decade, where we're inventorying, and it's, it's really based on diameter of pipe. And, and we're looking to, you know, create a database, which we've done within our Public Works Department, on the various drainage systems within our communities that enter into water bodies. And now we're in the process of putting together implementation plans. We'll have to prioritize which ones. We've got hundreds of these in our community, and so we will need to prioritize those. Certainly, a neighborhood that comes to us and asks us to work with them, we will work with them. And I think you heard that Public Works and Conservation and Health have already been out there working with them. So we will absolutely do that. At the end of the day, it'll come down to time and money. So we'll have to put our priorities in place, and then we'll have to proceed accordingly. But we are active on these issues. 5G is an absolute discussion we need to have. I'm getting solicited every day for the expansion of this technology. So we, in, in the town of Barnstable, we're also being offered monies to be able to advance these technologies, to, to promote economic development, specifically smaller businesses or in-home businesses. We're also seeing a greater use of the handheld technologies by everyone, and that drives the market for this. So just know that this is, this is an active discussion every day in this community. And there's absolutely two sides to this, and we really need to decide where we want to be on this specific issue. So thank you, and it was, it was very interesting to have a lot of people show up. It'll be interesting to see if that continues. So to my report. We're proceeding with the tax, tasks in the budget action calendar for FY '21 is scheduled. We're actively doing the CIP right now. We'll get that done first, and then we'll move into the operating budget. At this point, I'm meeting with our Director of Finance, Assistant Town Manager, and meeting department by department, going over the CIPs. I expect we'll be finalizing that in, in the relatively near future. I've also attached, because we're getting, you know, tax bills have gone out, frequently asked questions that, that go to our assessing department regarding property assessments. With tax bills arriving in mailboxes recently, we thought Town Council may want to have this FAQ to remain better informed on the issues. It is on our website as well, and Director Milne can certainly, next meeting if you'd like, or at any meeting, address any questions you have. We have been getting questions from our public, so I thought it might be helpful to see how our assessing department does what it does, how you file an abatement, et cetera. So hopefully, that's helpful. If you have other questions, and you email them to me, I'll be more than happy to expand this. Our Department of Public Works continues their efforts on public water supply well rehabilitation at the Mary Dunn Well Site, and the installation of test wells on numerous sites across town of Barnstable, including the Fish and Wildlife Property, immediately abutting the Hyannis Water System. We continue this effort and plan to complete the work in the spring of 2020. Public Works has also continued meetings with the other water purveyors in Barnstable as we look comprehensively at water management. I think it's important to point out that we are also looking at how we're going to dispose of our wastewater. And we need to make sure that we look at these issues comprehensively. We're all aware of the districts that we have for fire and water in our community, but truly, the discussion is about water in the town of Barnstable, both drinking water and wastewater disposal. It truly is. It's broader than any political boundary. It actually goes over into Sandwich, Mashpee, and Yarmouth as well. And we really need to have that type of active discussion, or else we're not going to come up with as good of a solution as we hope that we will come to. So Director Santos and I are actively doing this, and you will see us more aggressively draw people in, and some of the discussions will become difficult, because where your site wastewater disposal, or where we pull our drinking water from, may, that scenario and the way we look at it may need to change for us to come up with the most effective plan. More to come on that one. Town Council appointed the Town Manager as its representative on the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Board. The bylaws and regulation Subcommittee met on January 7th. We began discussions of draft regulations and expect to continue discussions through the first quarter of 2020. The full board is scheduled for its next meeting on January 28th, 4:00 p.m., in the East Wing Conference Room of the Barnstable County Complex. The Cape Cod Commission maintains a webpage, so you can keep up to date with this. The primary, we, we won't be discussing the, we've already passed the bylaws. I'm the Chair of this committee. We are working on the regulations. We won't be getting to a final draft regulation till later in the first quarter of 2020. You know, still a lot of discussion to be had about how the funds that will be available will be distributed, and, and we need to have a lot of back and forth and input there. The primary focus of the next board meeting will be interesting though, because DOR will report out on the status of revenues. And we really don't have numbers yet that we can utilize for any, for any funding purpose. And so I'll probably have Director Milne there to listen in on that, and I expect that will be an active discussion. As reported at our last meeting, we are working with Senator Sears' office, the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, and the Department of Environmental Protection to secure any funding recently made available by the state, to assist the Hyannis Water System operating and capital costs associated with the removal of contaminants, primarily PFOS. There's a couple of line items. I provided this information to you at your last meeting. One related to reimbursement or, or ongoing testing that we will incur as we proceed with, you know, monitoring the PFOS in, in public water supply systems. Staff is compiling eligible expenses. I, I believe the Assistant Town Manager has a summary of that, so I'll be reaching out to DEP. I already have in general. I'm going to go in with specifics very shortly to try and begin reimbursement for work already done, and try to set us up for reimbursement as we move forward. The other piece of it is the Clean Water Trust. That's the SRF fund. These monies are targeted to come in as a principal subsidy, in addition to subsidies that we may have already received. There's $10,650,000 available, and Director Milne is in conversations with the Clean Water Trust to see, we don't want them, we've got, we've got $10 million worth of filter equipment, basically, that, you know, they're ready to go to bond with. We don't want them to go to bond. We've asked them to consider delaying that, because once they go permanent, long-term, whatever the subsidy was, it was. And that's, that opportunity's over, and would have to wait for the next. So if they can go short-term for a little while and make a decision how they're going to apply these funds, we might get a greater principal, I think we got about 600-plus-thousand already, we may get a greater principal subsidy. So we are in direct conversations with the Clean Water Trust at this point, trying to position ourselves so that, you know, under, under the appropriate regulations, we can access these monies. I'll keep you advised as we progress on that. On January 3rd, 2020, I attended the Economic Development Task Force meeting. This task force was created by a former Town Council President. One of the first orders of business was to determine if the newly-elected Town Council President wanted the task force to continue with its efforts. After speaking with our Town Council President, I affirmed that with the, with the board. Basically, I said, "Yes, they want you to continue." They also inquired as to how new members might be added to the task force. I explained that the task force should submit their recommendations to the Town Council President for consideration. So I, I expect, I think they had two members, I believe they may be replacement, but I'm not positive of that, of other members, so I've asked them to communicate directly with the President of the Town Council on that. I attended both Subcommittee meeting and full task force meeting. At the Subcommittee, we discussed ideas related to water access and mooring management, as well as housing. And I know in my conversation with the President of the Town Council, that was one of the areas that he wanted to make sure that they were going to come back with, with comment on, specifically housing. In the full task force, we discussed regulatory reform, fee and development costs, customer service and communication, zoning and permitting. I'll keep you advised of any future meetings I attend with the task force, and, and defer to the President of the Town Council for dissemination of any of the materials that they produce, as they are an ad hoc committee, you know, created by the President of the Town Council. But I'd be more than happy to get you the information if you don't have access to that information. We continue to progress with the internal reorganization of our existing workforce to create a Director of Communications position and supporting staff, staff under the direct oversight of the Town Manager's Office. The position of Communications Director has been posted, and we will move expeditiously with this reorganization. I've invited the Town Council leadership to participate in the review of the process for our Director of Communication. Primary role of the position includes responsibility for managing and directing our organization's internal and external communication efforts. This position, in coordination with the Town Manager's Office, will supervise public relations, create communication strategy, and may serve as a primary media contact for the organization when appropriate. And all other duties is assigned, but, you know, I'm trying to really focus in on how -- focus in on how we can best utilize this resource. I will not be asking for additional resources. I will be reorganizing and utilizing existing resources. One of the efforts undertaken by our, the person playing that role for us now, Director Poyant, was starting in the first issue of our new year, was to add town calendars, official agendas, and legal notices into our e-news. I know that our e-news is getting heavily laden with information. People say that to me, wow. On the other hand, we send out thousands and thousands of those, and many people say to me, thank you. That's, geez, that's a great way to gain access to information. So they actually look forward to it. So I think we'll try to continue that. But at some point, I'll have to ask Lynn to, and she, she is constantly doing this, but we'll have to make sure that it's just not so much information that people stop looking at it. At the November 7, 2019 Town Council meeting, the Town Council voted to adopt a litter control ordinance and enforcement provision. We're utilizing the Town Census mailing to ensure that all households in the Town of Barnstable are aware of this new ordinance, and to share with you the images you will be seeing around the town in the near future. So I've attached what we've already sent out to all of our residents, and I say, thank you for helping to keep the Town of Barnstable litter-free for you and me. The census went out to over 22,000 households last week, the last week of December, I'm sorry, and, pretty much began arriving around the 1st of January. Our Community Service Office has been responding to phone calls about the ordinance. We are taking complaints and forwarding them to our Health Division when appropriate. We've also taken a number of contacts for people that, that we have to get back to about whatever the situation might be that they've identified. Most of the calls have been extremely positive, however, and they want to see us fine people who are violating our litter ordinance. We really haven't done that. And if you've looked, the fines are quite hefty. I mean, yeah. So we'd have to think about this. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but be prepared if we start hitting people with 500, 1,000, $2,000 fines for litter. We have also received a number of suggestions since the mailing went out to households and registered voters. Those suggestions have included sending a mailing to businesses like what was done for the bag ban, find a way to communicate with renters through the rental agencies and realtors, publicize weekly results of the number of people charged and dollars fined, and use Cape Cod dimes, and bottle redemption charges for NIPS was another thought. So we're getting feedback from our, from our public on this. And as Town Manager, I have lots of opportunity to communicate with our community, and I don't, I haven't had a negative comment about it, only, we didn't know you were doing this? Thank you. So, thank you. That concludes my Town Manager report.
Thank you very much, Mark. Counselors, questions, comments to Town Manager? Counselor Bogan.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll be very brief, Mark. Thank you. My question relates to the last item, which is the litter ordinance, because someone asked me the other day, and rather than me answering, I figured I'd just confirm it with you. The question was, well, gee, we have, in the village, garbage receptacles that are on town property. Does that mean if someone throws it in there, they're in violation of the litter ordinance? Should we get rid of the receptacles? And I said, well, it seems a little counterintuitive. I don't think that's what it was intended to do.
No, it isn't. It's not. We are looking at modifying the availability of, of disposal in the traditional sense, meaning barrels and dumpsters around town. It's more take-what-you-bring scenario. Surprisingly, and, and a lot of people will speculate that, oh, it'll be a disaster. We have not found that when we've removed these. It's been actually the opposite. So, but no, if they put it in the appropriate container, they won't be cited for some litter violation.
And they won't be able to say to me, you told me it was okay.
Send them to me. You send them to me. I'll take care of that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, no household trash, right? The signs are always there, no household trash.
Well, I'm assuming they're not bringing their bag trash down to the back of the car. Yeah, who's just to throw away some, yeah.
It's very convenient if you're walking the beach, if there is some kind of receptacle. We're encouraging everyone to pick up what they see on the beach when they're walking, but then after a while, your pockets get full, and you don't know what to do with it.
Well, actually, down in Craigville, and Dan Santos is back there, so I know he's listening. But a lot of people do that, and then they put the trash, if they don't take it in their car, which many do, they tend to put it in where the dumpster would be, but isn't this time of year. So in and around the lifeguard stands, there's quite a bit of trash that people have collected, and they just kind of stuff it in there. So, and you can tell it's beach, beach trash, not household trash.
And the wind puts it back there, back on the beach where you picked it up.
So we got to swing through and double-check that every once in a while, just so it doesn't blow it back out on the beach.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Snep.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mark, for the report. I just wanted to commend the Channel 18 staff for the waste pollution control facility, facility video that was part of the e-news last week. If you haven't seen it, Counselors, click. And I think it's a great example of our way to outreach to the larger community. It was very professionally done, and I look forward to more.
Thank you.
Counselor Beedenbender.
Thank you, President Hebert. Just on the heels of that, regarding the newsletter, and a shout-out to Lynn Poyant for the work that she does on that, because I had a, an accidental meeting on my way over here with constituent, and they made the comment on how robust that newsletter is, that if you just read that newsletter, you will know everything that's going on in the Town of Barnstable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Neri. Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, I just had a couple of questions here. On your, I guess it's number five, you talk about, this is great news with what I'm anticipating additional funding coming for not only searing, but, but clean water, this Clean Water Trust. Is there a timeframe on that in terms of how they determine, when does the money become available? Is it, is it, is it a specific annual, year?
Yes. And, well, I, I, I don't believe either of these two items that I've identified. And I believe I had, may have sent, or may even be contained in this, that I had sent a link. If it's not in this, it's in the last Town Manager update that I sent you. So you can click in and look at that legislation and what was approved. None has been distributed, to my knowledge, at this point. They're trying to determine how they will distribute it. It's two different pieces. One's administered to the State Revolving Fund, the other is through DEP. And I think we may be one of the more aggressive communities asking for distribution. I believe, as I read the legislation, it expires in June, the end of June 2021.
Oh, so it's still a year and a half.
So we've got some time here. But we've also, Director Santos had sent through some of the millions of dollars of expenses that we've incurred relevant to this issue. And a portion of that is certainly testing that, that we're required to do, and additional testing over.
That's true. And more to the point, that, you know, the hope is, this is, this is just on, on water, clean water. But when we get to searing, the hope is that there'll be similar programs that will come out to help offset some of the tremendous costs that the town will be facing down the road. I mean, we can't bank on it. We can't guarantee it. But my hope is that, that funding will become available, because it's, it's, it's a universal problem that the municipalities are facing. With that said, with EPA kind of dancing along, whether lowering the, the rates that are going to be acceptable for PFOS, and some of the emerging contaminants, this problem will get bigger, if anything, in terms of cost to try to mitigate and, and clean water throughout the municipalities in the state. With that said, I applaud you and, and your staff. Two years or, or so ago, a study was made determining where in the town, the specific town of Barnstable that, that wells, they kind of rated them, as, as you're aware, of where they should be positioned. And with the town owning the Hyannis Water System as an enterprise fund, so it's owned and operated and managed by the town, it really is only a, a small percentage of the overall water that really is used and comes out of the ground in the town. So when I see, you know, your, your prior indication, I know that you're working with, with Director Santos, but even the Fish and Wildlife area may be somewhat down the list in terms of the appropriate places in town. So my hope is that it's probably going to come down to a money issue or a math problem, but there can be some coordination between the other fire districts in town to, to really kind of root out where these wells need to go in the, in the long-term process of, of creating good, clean water for the town. So I, I think this is the second time you brought this up, was maybe a few months ago. But, but this is a, this is great news, if, if we can kind of get all the, all the heads at the same table and see if this can't be rooted out.
We've been actively doing that. I think it's a departure from, from how we have actively played. We've always worked together with, with our water districts, our fire districts. They do an excellent job. We, we haven't planned necessarily together for all of our collective water needs. And it's time to do that. That's, I mean, it's a very simple concept. You don't put your drinking water under where you live and work and recreate. You try to put it in areas where it's a less intense use. It's just very, very simple. And, you know, we acquired a decade-plus ago the Hyannis Water System, knowing that the infrastructure hadn't been maintained properly, and that there were challenges with quality in the system. And we stepped it up day one, and we've invested in improving the infrastructure, and we've worked on improving and meeting new quality challenges as they present themselves. But I don't, if you go back to the old reports at acquisition, it was all, you know, it was all identified. And, you know, the concern was that a private entity held that drinking water supply for, you know, arguably, the economic center of southeastern Massachusetts, and that wasn't being maintained properly, and therefore, the Town of Barnstable, in its wisdom, moved forward with that. So.
Hopefully, you know, moving forward, we can kind of get all of the, the districts together. And.
They, they have, they have been there for us, and Town of Yarmouth. They've been there for us in discussion and in support. So I expect that that will continue. But it'll still be a difficult discussion at times.
It will. It will. I'm sure it can be solved.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Be thinking, if you want to speak. I'm going to just ask a question, too, if I could, Mark. The Stewart's Creek, we know that there are a number, almost 50% of the homeowners have not attached to the sewer system that we put in around Stewart's Creek. Is that correct?
I don't know what the number. I'd have to have Director Santos.
Okay. Dan is saying no. Maybe 40%. Last time I heard, it was 47%, but.
I can, I can get you that number.
If we could just check that out, and, and so if we could advance tying that whole, since we've put the expense there, that'd be great. And the other thing is, you know, these alternative systems, apparently that grant came down, and the Clean Water Coalition, I think, is in charge of the grant that came down to place some alternative systems. And some of them may or may not be experimental, but we want to learn more about that. I'm just wondering if we could concentrate those systems in our town, going in in areas that we think we might not get to pipe. And if, if it was very successful, there may be a section that we don't have to pipe, because the alternative systems are functioning and working. I would imagine any homeowner is holding off. If their, if their system is questionable, they're, they're saying, well, how soon is the pipes going to go by, and maybe I can not do this improvement. So I think it might be difficult for homeowners. So I don't, I don't know what the answer is to that. I just want us to keep thinking about it.
Well, we are. And I think it, it's reflected in the current plan that we have, especially in the third phase. And especially as we move radially away from the infrastructure that we already have in place. You know, I think the, the addition that we speak about when we talk about lakes and ponds and streams and rivers, is really the environmental systems that are out there in our community right now. And knowing how they're functioning, and knowing what the impacts are, whether it be on septic systems, or fertilizer use, or road runoff, and doing everything we can within the, the somewhat routine maintenance that we do through our Department of Public Works, to make sure they're functioning as well as they can, and constantly assessing this, as well as overlaying the additional infrastructure, the wastewater that we're talking with you about. And the hope is that by being able to not only operate and maintain in a way that makes these systems work better, because nature will try to improve itself and get back to what it should be, if we can enhance with a mill pond dredging, or if we can, you know, do some other innovative approaches, we absolutely need to do that. Because, you know, the cost of this is astronomical. But there isn't an option. We need to do this. So we need to be doing all of it simultaneously and parallel with each other. And, and I do think that we need to ramp up the, kind of the upland freshwater aspect of this, and make sure those systems are functioning as well as they can, and utilizing innovative technologies. A lot of that's already included, but, yeah, we can, we can even do more.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you, Mark. Okay, Dan's not coming up to speak? No, okay. Thank you very much. He was moving in on you.
He's going to tell me. 25% not connected, Dan says, plus or minus.
That's a big improvement. Thank you, Dan.
He just knows that up the top of his head.
Counselor Bogan.
Not a question, but thank you for raising the last issue, because this is actually for Dan. One of the things that I was hoping to hear perhaps on the next report is, we speak in terms of the timetable with regard to the traditional wastewater treatment facilities, the searing, et cetera. But I know there have been references, as the President just alluded, to the non-traditional opportunities as well. So perhaps in the next report, we can get a little more detail on what that timeline looks like. I know, and perhaps some of the issues or opportunities we're, we're considering. That's all.
Great. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, on to, we're going to act, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Counselor Raprasetti to act on the minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd make a motion that the council accept the Town Council meeting minutes of December 19, 2019, as presented.
I have a correction, please.
Thank you.
I thank Ms. Murphy for correcting Wendy Northcross's last name. But I also think it's significant to have in the record that the Blue Economy Project is a partnership with the Town of Barnstable.
Okay. Any objections to those corrections?
No, but if you could just cite the page that you're making reference on, please.
That's page two, second paragraph, starting with Wendy Northcross, where there was a discussion about the blue economy in the presentation that was made by the chamber.
Counselor staff?
Page.
Oh.
Page two.
Okay. Any objections to that? Okay.
Thank you.
Any other corrections, comments? Okay. So we have a first? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you very much. Great. Right, and communications. So I would like to start with communications. And I know that Counselor Levesque would like to make some comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am, and there's a, a movement, so to speak, of committee chairs speaking about committees and talking about what's going on at the committee level here in the Town of Barnstable, and requested by leadership of the council that I, that I speak about, the Appointments Committee, which I chair, and the need for some participation and encourage citizens of the Town of Barnstable that there is opportunity, and that you can be involved at a larger scale. And there are lots of different committees you can be a part of, boards, commissions, and all that is on our website. and all that is on our website, from what I understand, it is continually updated, and two particular committees that were mentioned at one of my discussions were the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, and that is, there's a couple of positions left on that, and the Human Services Committee, which, right now, at this point, I don't believe has enough members to meet quorum. So that would be great if, if anybody was interested of getting involved, that's, and again, I will offer other committees and, you know, talk about that as, from meeting to meeting, but those are two committees that I just thought I'd mention currently. And while I have the mic, if I can make a couple other comments, the Marstens Mills Ham and Bean Supper is coming up on January 25th. It is from four to six, $10 a person, and tickets are available, and it's always a great turnout, and we hope that it'll continue to be that way, and that goes to support scholarships, $1,000 scholarships for high school seniors that are residents of Marstens Mills. And, what's that? It's January 25th, Saturday, from four to six. And also wanted to mention too, that today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So the good news is, and I know it's at nine o'clock at night, and if you didn't get a chance to thank your police officers today, the good news is, just like Mother's Day, we can give, we can thank our moms other days of the year, other than Mother's Day, but just a shout-out appreciation to all our law enforcement officers and everybody at the Barnstable Police Department that serve our community so effectively, and just really appreciate all the hard work and sacrifice, and of course, the families, and what they, they give back to the community as well. So just wanted to say that, thank you.
To this police officer for the entire force, thank you. Counselor Snap, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, in the spirit of reporting out on some of the committees that we participate in, today, the Zoning and Regulation Subcommittee met, that's a subcommittee of the town council. We had a changing of the guard, and the baton passed from Councilor Cullum to myself, so I will be the new chair of that committee for the foreseeable future. As you are probably aware from public comment, the top item that we're having discussions about is regarding short-term rental regulations, and our town Director of Planning and Development, Elizabeth Jenkins, reported on sort of the elements of the regulations that we will be considering going forward, and a lot of that has been informed by research, by the staff, public comment, there's a variety of resources that has come together, and as all of you know, we're, we're the policymakers, not the folks that are going to actually craft it. So staff has been directed to bring a draft of those regulations, and we are hoping to have that in a final format, draft final format, at our March 5th meeting. Our, our meetings in February, if we have more than one, will be looking at some of the elements. We're very committed to a public process. There's going to be, right now, two elements, one would be a general ordinance, and the other component would be a zoning ordinance. As you know, any zoning has to go before a planning board as well. So anticipate that for the next couple of months, we will be bringing forward to the full council updates on our process, with the hopes of getting something to you by this spring. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I do want to point out that we, we are moving forward, we have had a Committee on Homelessness Assessment, and we believe that the period of assessment has been substantial, and it's time to retire that particular committee, and we're going to renew the committee under a new name, which will be the Committee to, to Address Homelessness in the town of Barnstable. And a very active member of that committee has some wonderful ideas to move us forward, and so I would ask Councilor Beedenbender to address that.
Thank you, President Hebert. I want to thank Councilor Cullum, who chaired that committee up until this, this moment, for all the work that she and the committee did to try and address a number of concerns that had been brought forth over the last couple of years, and, and working hand-in-hand with our VPD, our Fire Department, in, in trying to address those concerns. But we all agreed that we're now at a point of transition, and, and we would like to take on a new focus of getting to functional zero. So the Committee to Address Homelessness, the charge is written as thus, "The charge of the Committee to Address Homelessness is to determine a path to functional zero which recognizes that there will always be people who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless, but as long as these people can be identified and rehoused quickly and effectively, the homeless rate will be effectively or functionally zero. The Committee will evaluate, identify gaps and limiting factors in the current system and processes, and develop the framework that closes the gap."
I thank you very, very much. So I would also add to, to that, it was really the, the continual concern and compassion that really Councilor Cullum has really done over these years, and she has been the driving force to really look at it, assess it, and say, how can we keep leaving human beings staying out in the cold? So I would more than just congratulate you, Councilor Cullum, for a great, great job, and thank you very much. Any other communications? Yes, Councilor Shaughnessy, please.
Two items from the Council of Aging, very much in need of Meals on Wheels drivers in the town of Barnstable, and I want to emphasize to everyone that Meals on Wheels is so much more than just the delivery of a hot meal. For a lot of our seniors, it is a wellness and a welfare check, and in addition to that, for a lot of our seniors, it is some human contact. Many of these people are isolated, they're shut in, this may be the only person or people that they communicate in every given week, so it's a very important service we provide. Anyone interested, the number to volunteer, 508-790-2746. The other item is that, beginning on Tuesday, January 21st, the Adult Community Center is going to start taking appointments. The AARP Foundation has provided funds for a tax aid program, so from February through April, volunteers will be there to provide free tax prep assistance. Beginning January 21st, you can make an appointment by calling 508-862-4750. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Bogan, please.
Two matters, one, piggybacking on Councilor Levesque. Last month, this is an appreciation of the contributions of our law enforcement officers, as well as the DPW Director. Last month, Gordon Starr and I had occasion to attend the swearing-in of our two newest police officers in the town, and I took the opportunity to meet with Chief Sonnenbend, and I asked him, you know, what are the issues that frequently come before you? And he said, "In Oysterville, usually the first thing is speeding." And literally, I kid you not, the next day I got an email from a constituent regarding their concern with speeding on a particular road, and I circled back to the chief and said, "This was not a setup, this is just fortuitous timing." And he got on it, he corresponded with the constituent, I think enlisted the support of Dan Santos, and I got an email this week from the constituent to the chief, expressing his gratitude for their response. So I thank you, Dan. If you didn't do anything, take the credit anyway, because they think you did, if you did, I appreciate it. Secondly, deviating again, this is a personal matter, if you, if I can indulge me, this Saturday will be the first Saturday I begin office hours at the office, Oysterville, Osterville, Oysterville Village Library, from 10 o'clock till 12 o'clock, it'll be the second Saturday of each month. I take the opportunity to announce it here, since my website director's been sick for the last two weeks and we didn't get it up. Thank you to Cindy Cotton at the library for helping to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Councilor Cullum, please.
Yes, thank you very much. So first, thank you for acknowledging Paul, President Hebert, the, the effort of the committee, definitely not just mine, but it's a, the homelessness committee, to me, opened a conversation that needed to be had about Hyannis, and, and how we manage this very difficult population, and we're the only, well, except for Falmouth, really the only town on Cape that does. It was a very, I think, eye-opening experience for most people on the committee. I think we, we proved that we deserve a seat at the table when it comes to our future. Hyannis does, Barnstable as the greater entity does, that, you know, if we, if we pay attention and we show up, we are considered, and that if we overlap what resources we have with police and fire, we can actually save lives. And that, that really is the crux of it, and I know that there's been, you know, a lot of conversation about, you know, the bad things that Jen said on that committee or whatever, so I really appreciate you taking the time to acknowledge that sometimes difficult conversations have very positive results. And I think that when you have an outlet like that for frustration to be heard, in the end, you end up with a better product and a happier community. I'm really happy about Councilor Beedenbender's new ideas, and I hope we do get to functional zero, and I, I just think that we have to continue to ask those very difficult questions, are we actually affecting change with what we have? And it makes everyone uncomfortable, and I'm always going to bring it up, so there you go. But thank you anyway for acknowledging that, I appreciate it. I have a thought about the, the Appointments Committee that I'd like to share, that was brought up from a constituent of mine at the Greater Hyannis Civic Association the other night that I thought was very interesting. In Orleans, the Appointments Committee is televised, interviews are televised, and I think that when I, when I went home and I thought about that more, I thought about how some of our committees languish for, you know, lack of application, and I thought that maybe that would be a way to, to get people more interested. And also, I think the process would be more transparent for people, so they could see what the application process was like, what it's like to meet with a group of councilors, what questions are asked of you, you know, if it's, if it's, is it really, you know, is it really an interview, like what, what actually exists? Just something to think about, I thought it was a really interesting idea, and I really liked the way it sounded, it seems a lot more open than, than the way we do it currently. So, thank you.
Councilor Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that as this new year and actually new decade begins, my family and I just want to wish everybody a healthy, joyous, and successful new year, and I look forward to continuing to work together towards serving the, the people of the town of Barnstable. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilor Raprasetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the committees and their being televised, I'm very happy to report that the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, which meets up in the third floor, you know, conference room, kind of hidden away, never's been videotaped, will now be videotaped, and those meetings will be able to be viewed on Channel 18, which I think is very important, because what that committee, not only discussing the CIP, but the budget, but will be assisting us in undertaking the development of the CWMP financing, so I think that's exciting. I also wanted to say that the Santuitt Bridge, well, actually, it's on Old Kings Road, Old Kings Road slash Sampson's Mill Road, which is actually Mashpee, and we share this culvert, and we say that in quotes, culvert, it's actually a bridge that crosses the Santuitt River, was recently completed and repaired. It, it's beautiful, they did a fantastic job, they came in right on time, you know, there was some inconvenience with having to detour, but I also want to say that during, during the, the process, I was doing a site visit, you want to see how connected our ponds and, and rivers, streams, and estuaries are. I witnessed the Santuitt River looked like the, the river in Chicago on St. Patty's Day. It was bright green, lime green, because of the cyanobacteria in Santuitt Pond. Didn't last forever, but I also witnessed it all the way down into Shoestring, which goes into Pappanesset. So it was, it was quite, quite frightening, and all I could imagine was the loss of the sea-run brook trout that has happened over the, over the time there in that river, and, and it's just very sad. So I, I'm very happy that our manager is looking towards and focusing on our efforts, not only on the estuaries, the saltwater, but on our freshwater bodies, so important to the community. Thank you.
I, I do want to thank the comments about, you know, trying to get more recordings of not necessarily live television coverage, but if we could get recording filming of it, that it could be put on at a later date. But the problem is really logistics, so we're trying to work on how much logistics we can put into covering, you know, we have 43 commissions, committees, and boards, so it's, we just run out of staff and equipment in order to cover all of those. So the important thing is to keep stressing to the public that all of our committee meetings are open to the public, and, and, you know, there's no limit to how many people can, can attend and come and make comment and, and observe and participate, so that's the big thing to, to stress there. And then, just kind of in, in closing on committees and commissions, and it's okay, and I just brought this up at a meeting we had this week, and I couldn't remember the last part of the, I learned this taking business courses, that when, when you have groups come together, what we do is we form, and then we normalize, you know, you get, get used to being together and, and sharing, and then sometimes when there's conflict, that's when we storm, we actually say, hey, this isn't working, or you're not hearing me, or we're not communicating well. And then when you get through that, that's when you start to really inform one another. So it's okay to have some friction, some, some, you know, as somebody said to me, we don't always have to have 100% consensus, there's room for disagreement and discussion, and that's what makes us a healthy community, so thank you. Thank you for your reports, it was really fun to hear committee reports starting to be generated here, this is a goal that we have, so this is awesome. Anyone else would like to make any more comments? Okay, with all your permission, we're going to close the communications, and we're going to go now to the orders of the day. So the first order of the day is item number 2020-073, it's old business, and I'm going to ask Councilor Levesque to handle that, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is old business, second reading, may be acted upon. Item number 2020-073, it's appointments to a board committee or commission, resolve that the town council appoints the following individuals to a multi-member board committee or commission. The airport commission, John G. Flores of Comiquin, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/2021. The land acquisition or preservation committee, Douglas Payson of Barnstable, Massachusetts, as a regular member to term expiring 6/2020. And the planning board, M.E. Guthinger, 22 Holly Hill Road, Centerville, Massachusetts, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/2021, as written. Thank you.
So we have a first, and we have a second in the discussion on item number 2020-073.
Who has a question?
We have a first, we have a second. All those in favor of moving the question? Aye. And, okay, all those in favor of item number 2020-073, please indicate by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous, thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Item number 2020-074, this, I would ask that Vice President Jessica Raprasetti read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is, I, on new business, refer to a public hearing on 1/23/2020. Item 2020- Item 2020-074, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $16,500 for the Barnstable Department of Public Works fiscal year 2020 operating expense budget for the purpose of funding maintenance of the former Cantuitt Elementary School located at 140 Old Oyster Road, Cantuitt, Mass., as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay. Okay. We have a first, we have a second. Thank you very much. All those in favor of moving item number 2020-074 to a public hearing on 1/23/2020? Indicate by saying aye and raising your hand. Good. Thank you, and that's unanimous. Item number 2020-075, and this may be acted upon. If Counselor Snapp could please read it into the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of new business, may be acted upon by a majority vote. Item number 2020-075, transfer order in the amount of $20,000 to increase the funding for the refurbishing and repair of five compactor units.
Okay, we have a second. And we have, we have Mr. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the town council. I'm Dan Santos, the Director of Public Works. Town council voted and approved the capital improvement project for refurbishing the five compactor units that accept municipal solid waste at the transfer station and recycling center. Operation and maintenance of the compactor units is essential to the operation of the transfer station and recycling center. Preventive maintenance prolongs the life of necessary equipment but cannot prevent normal wear and tear. After more than 20 years of use, basic preventive maintenance is not sufficient for continued operation. Refurbishment and replacement of internal parts is required to continue use of the compactors. The cost of the materials needed to perform this work has increased since the approval of the project. This increase has resulted in project bids exceeding the appropriated funding. Using remaining fiscal year 2020 capital improvement funds from another project will allow the solid waste division to complete work necessary for the efficient operation of the facility for users. Transfer of funds will cover the unexpected increase of costs to refurbish and repair the compactor units and avoid any delays that may result in equipment failure. Capital improvement project 2019-141 rolloff trailer replacement has been completed, and remaining funds of $20,513 are due to be returned to the solid waste division reserves. Instead, we are proposing that the remaining funds be redirected to project 2019-139 in order to complete the refurbishment of the five compactor units. There's no operational budget impact.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions to Mr. Santos?
Just one. Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Mr. President. So 2019-141, in effect, was roughly $80,000 instead of $100,000 as originally.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
We haven't moved the question. We have a second. All those in favor of moving the question, indicate by saying aye or raising your hand. Thank you very much. Okay, so all those in favor of accepting item number 2020-075, so indicate by raising your hand and saying aye. Aye. Any abstentions? Any objections? So that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 2020-076. This may be acted upon, and I would ask Counselor Clark.
This is a primary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Incorrect. Okay, we've, okay, refer to a public hearing. Thank you very much. And I would ask Counselor Clark to read that into the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. New business, refer to public hearing on 1/23/2020. This is item number 2020-076. Appropriation order in the amount of $169,266. Community preservation funds for hard and soft costs associated with preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration work to the West Barnstable Community Building located at 2377 Meeting House Way, West Barnstable, Mass.
So we have a first, and we have a second. All those, any discussion? We're just referring it. Okay, okay. So all those in favor of referring to item 2020-076 to a public hearing on January 23rd, 2020? Indicate by saying aye and raising your hand. Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, and just in comment, I believe that just about 100% of all of our counselors are going to be going to the MMA meeting, which is going to follow right after our next meeting. So that's, I think, almost historic, and we look forward to a very active, productive annual MMA meeting in Boston. With that said, unless there's any other comments, we're going to look at our next meeting, which will be January 23rd, 2020, and I would ask for a vote for adjournment. So moved? Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Safe travels home.